September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four work session of the Mayor and City Council for Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first we have a proclamation that is for Abilities Advocacy Month, and we have Star Communities with us. Would you join me up front? This is a proclamation for Abilities Advocacy Month, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas, people have the dignity to be valued and accepted for their abilities. And whereas, the inclusion of all abilities is integral to the growth and prosperity of our community. And whereas, citizens of Hagerstown should raise awareness of the importance of advocating for all abilities and be made aware of the value of people with different abilities. And whereas, our community must actively respect, include, support, and educate to support a community of all abilities. Now therefore, I, Taquisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim and recognize September, two thousand and twenty-four as Abilities Advocacy Month in Hagerstown, Maryland. The City of Hagerstown encourages all businesses, organizations, and community members to respect, include, support, and educate to establish a Hagerstown as a community of all abilities. Thank you for the work that you do, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, guys. We were incredibly excited to do this. Star Community has been around for fifty years in Hagerstown, and we're local. We're the only one here. And we have, our mission is to support people in making connections with their community. And we realize that we need to also focus on our community to make sure it's willing and prepared to support people with disabilities and as well. So we can't do that without our community. So that's why we came up with our Together We Rise Awareness Campaign, saying that when we respect, include, support, and educate, we can help our entire community to rise. And we are so excited to do that here in Hagerstown.
Yeah, I was thinking if council kind of. I would say for a T-shirt, but I don't want to seem like I'm.
Okay, give me your response, and one, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Okay, let's do one for my camera. Okay. Okay, one, two, three. And one good smile, one, two, three. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
You have lapel pins for everybody. Thanks, guys.
Oh, that's why.
I appreciate it.
They're open. Take good care, thank you. All right, next we have a discussion with Western Maryland Scenic Railroad, Engine Two-O-Two. We got Bob planning in, and I should say friends, but.
Before you all, if you remember about two months, just about two years, or two months, two years ago.
I was over here.
Quite warmer day than it is today, but anyway. But we're on still basically the same mission.
Thank you.
And I was very happy to hear from Scott a couple of months ago and said you all wanted to revisit our proposal and what we had in mind. To my right is our CEO, the railroad Wes Hines. And to his right is TJ Abe, who was our operations manager. I can only say a million wonderful things about Wes. Since we were before you last time, our ridership actually doubled since two thousand and twenty-two. And most of that is on Wes's back because of his continuing new and neat ideas on how to continue to promote the railroad. We're also very pleased to report that since we've seen you just two years ago, that we've hired more employees, and we're approximately forty people strong now. They're all full-time jobs, Blue Cross Blue Shield, paid time off. We aren't ourselves just an economic driver. After last year's amazing performance by all parties, and we hauled over seventy-five thousand people up and down the mountain, including the Polar Express. So we come before you today with some information. Some of you are more familiar with the Two-O-Two than others, and I understand that. We like think we're pretty familiar with steam. We've rebuilt the largest operating steam locomotive on the East Coast, which has taken high thirteen oh nine. So in comparison, Two-O-Two's small. She's a small girl. And for what it's worth, watching history and speaking to Scott and some other people, and some other rail fans down here, we know that she's not being utilized. Obviously, the way we would utilize her, which is we're gonna make her run. We're gonna fire her up, do what needs done to her, and have her back up so that she's not just a static display, sitting rusting away in a park. But she's actually a part of railroad history, coming back to life. Keeping in mind that she was rolled out by Baldwin in nineteen twelve. She'll be the oldest locomotive in our fleet, but all of ours are Baldwins. So we're very familiar with how to service them, how to deal with them. And again, as it says on the tender, Western Maryland, kind of all kind of goes together. We're the Western Maryland Railroad. We're what's basically left the Western Maryland Railroad. This engine was designed to do what she did, which was pull trains on the Western Railroad system. And that's system-wide. That meant from Cumberland to Frostburg onto Chicago in the heyday. Or down the Elkins subdivision, leaving Cumberland, going to Elkins, West Virginia. Western Maryland built her to do the tracks that we have today. So that's why we feel very confident in a rebuild to put her back in service, because that's what she was built to do. The train, the pictures you see, if you notice, she has quite a number of cars behind her. You'll have to excuse my using her, but ships and steam engines and things like that get to be called her with the romance of everything. So we know her history. We have video, we of course obviously have the pictures, and we've researched it really quite well. It does hurt when we just drove over the park before we got here. And we've been visiting, you know, keeping an eye on her, so to speak. That's not her fate. It shouldn't be sitting in a park resting away. And I know that's why Scott called us, because we, again, want her, and we believe we are the viable candidate, because we don't have to change the name on the tender. She'll be running back on her own rails. And so I'm gonna turn it over here in just a second to Wes, and I want to thank you all for your time today. This is a mission of love and mercy, because a couple of years from now, you'll have nothing to donate. You'll have nothing to save. She's at that point, and we know what that point is, because when we got thirteen oh nine in the B and O Museum, thirteen oh nine was getting to that point where things, metal was getting very thin. And let's face it, the elements, if you don't paint it, it's like you don't paint a fence. It's gonna rot and go away. You don't paint metal over time, it's gonna rot and go away. And so without us really doing a full-blown inspection of the locomotive, we're going on chance that because we know what our shop crews can do, that we can fix anything that's wrong with her and get her back in service. So again, that's my thing, because history says you leave something sitting in the weather too long, there's nothing left to repair or fix. So at this point, to my right, Wes Hines, all yours.
Honored and counsel, thank you for having us. Some faces are familiar from two years ago. So I'll try to keep it brief and build on Bob's narrative. When we took over, and I say we, staff and Bob was a big part of my coming to Western Maryland, I have roughly thirty years' experience working with steam locomotives and railroads on top of being a guerrilla marketing person with Samsung and Microsoft. So that's kind of my history. And when I came to Western Maryland, I've been given, I've been personally and professionally given this gift to share with everybody about how do we take something and we make it more. So my mission personally became about how do we impact communities? And how do we bring jobs and things of that nature? So the Two-O-Two has been in the mirror for quite some time. I would come to Hagerstown, I've probably been here about twenty-four times or so. And I go to the park, and no matter what day and what time of the day I go, it's behind the fence. And you can't get to it. And I sit there and the gears start turning. So when I see it, what I see is an ambassador for Hagerstown. The engine probably, you know, I don't know if anyone is still alive that actually would have run at that era in time with the engine. But to me, it's really important that the engine be allowed to live and become a piece of history that continues to share itself. And this way, kids can look at it and see it living and breathing and moving versus what, I mean, we're probably all about the same age in here. And when we go around to different cities, whether it's Annapolis, or whether we go to DC or Baltimore, and you see history, the things that really go away, go away with you are the things that you can look at, and you can see them in motion, and you can see their impact on society. So that's kind of where this concept comes up, is how do we take Two-O-Two and make it something exciting? The park is incredible facility for the City of Hagerstown. And what we envision, if the locomotive is not sitting there, as Bob said, static and gathering dust, what do you do? And our concept is to create events that are Hagerstown-centric so that we can do fundraisers, whether it's a nonprofit organization that focuses on the well-being of children, or maybe it's a playground or whatever. We would like to tie into that and use the Two-O-Two to help funnel different charitable events for the kids of Hagerstown. So the engine now, not only being a visual piece running, now it's giving back to the community, which right now, it's probably not giving back to the community the way it was originally envisioned, because that was in nineteen fifty-two, and we're now in twenty twenty-four. So for Western Maryland as a railroad, to go from two thousand and twenty-one, we were forty-five thousand people. This year, we're gonna be at about eighty-five thousand people. We envision a program, it's a lot of people. Polar Express is thirty-five thousand people in five weeks. So we cram them all on, and Santa, there's three or four Santas on the train, and we have a great time. We work from sunup until about ten o'clock at night. Sometimes the steam engine's on the head end, sometimes it's not. And we try to bring kids' imaginations alive and ignite something in them that makes them excited for not just Christmas, but excited for family. One of the things that is not in this deck is, has just occurred in the last two weeks. Western Maryland Scenic, because we're carrying so many people out of Cumberland to Frostburg, we now are developing a second railroad called the George's Creek Division Railroad. It is a common carrier versus what we are now as a nonprofit. We have created a for-profit railroad that will operate in another section of Allegheny County. The Western Maryland Scenic, in a convoluted way, will be leased into operating passenger trains with the same mechanism in place, so that we can give the community something to be proud of. If any of y'all know Midland, Maryland, down through Westernport, all of the industrial centers and all the different things that people could earn money and live their lives out, most of that is all gone. So you have down the middle of that valley, a twelve-mile stretch of railroad track that hasn't really been utilized for about two decades. So we have now taken it upon ourselves, trying to figure out how to do all those moving parts. But the intent is to build forty more jobs and make sure that the kids see the train running. And Two-O-Two can be part of that as well. So we're expanding and looking for different ways we can continue to impact Western Maryland as a whole. When we market and we plan for our events, Hagerstown to Oakland, that's really our meat and potatoes through that area. And then our reach extends to Washington DC and Baltimore, and then westward to Pittsburgh. And then, believe it or not, Richmond, Virginia is one of our key markets as well. So we have a lot of people coming to see us from about a hundred and fifty-mile circle around Cumberland. And we would love to have Two-O-Two there and become custodians of her well-being and share her with the families. And then, you know, one of the coolest things, we brainstormed about this several times, is we kind of figured a good way to honor Hagerstown was to offer a perpetual, I hate to use the word discount, but a perpetual spiff, so that if you come to the railroad and you have a Hagerstown driver's license or identification, then you would receive a discounted fare. And that wouldn't just apply to the Two-O-Two's operations, that would apply to the railroad as a whole. So we want to do something that expands our reach beyond the confines of Cumberland, Allegheny County, and continue to impact people in a very real way, intangible way, that they can see, they can smell, and they can hear. So that's what I have to say. You can look through the deck and see all these things that you've seen here actually have been created. Even some of the photographs of Two-O-Two, I'll give up the ghost and let you know that some of these pictures are probably Two-O-three, or Two-O-eight, or Two-ten, or something. And our young men and women that work for us have figured out how to become marketing and graphics arts designers, and they've figured all this stuff out. So that's what they do. And then certainly not last or least, but TJ is a Western Maryland native, as is Bob. But TJ is a historian at heart, and he actually dug up some information that he'd like to share. And that'll close me out, and you can close us off.
Absolutely. So I know as somebody who's thirty-three years old, it's hard for me to speak for the children, but I was born in ninety-one, the same year the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad was established. So I grew up on the hillside, right across from the station that we operate into today. And growing up, I seen our resident steam engine, you know, for twenty-three years, pull passengers up and down from Frostburg. What it did for me, I mean, it was such an impact on what my life has become. I mean, as I sit here in front of you all. And I'm not an isolated case here. We have a staff, I mean, I'd say in large part, our staff, on average, age would be about twenty-five years old. Our staff, seeing a live steam engine parked in front of the station, pulling passengers, doing what it was intended to do, just had the greatest impact on some of us. And that's what drew people back to our area. So it's got such a history for Western Maryland, and it would just be incredible to see it back on our trackage.
If I can, do you have some questions, some thoughts? As Mayor of Frostburg, I know how this works, so tell me what you're thinking.
I just want to say thank you for sharing that, because those are the most impactful stories. And the connection, when you grow up and you're able to watch a thing and then go work for it and advocate for it, and I could hear, I could hear how that felt, the feeling in your voice. Almost, almost, almost made me cry. Have any questions? No questions?
Yes.
No, I just had a couple, and this is, this is me putting on my hat, representing the concerns that I hear, emails that I get. I actually personally think this is a good, you know, a good way to honor the Two-O-Two. But I did ask some questions, just in my due diligence here. One of which is, we've got several emails, and I've gotten several contacts from folks that are obviously very proud of the Two-O-Two and would like to see it stay. One of which, I think you touched on it, a suggestion that I had was perhaps, maybe not everybody here in town would, you know, has the financial ability to go and visit, right? That may be able to get to the city park. But I was glad to hear your idea about the discounted rates for tickets. I was gonna suggest maybe something like some kind of a program that we would have an ability to field trip kids to go see it, city kids, or something like that. But the, one of the other questions I had was in regards to historic restoration of these steam engines, kind of to help soothe people's concerns, like your track record on that. Do you have other ones that have come up in a similar thing, and are they still in operation on the rail?
Thirteen oh nine was our, was our project of recent. We have fired it from, I say our project, because I've been on the board a long time. When our engine that he grew up to know and love, seven thirty-four, when seven thirty-four went out of service for her FRA inspection, or we're getting ready to, we were getting inkling from the B and O Museum that they were willing to divest, like we're asking you to do, divest some equipment back to other railroads, because they were, they couldn't take care of all their stuff either, and it was parked outside. So we were given a choice of one of three locomotives, and we picked the one that would be the mountain, called the Mountain Mawler, but it was built also to run on a mountain. We left the two pretty ones behind. We brought the Baldwin out, and after some state grants and a lot of blood, sweat, and gears, and tears, and all that other stuff, thirteen oh nine was re-crescent, Western Maryland thirteen oh nine. And she'd been in service with us now for a couple of years. And our shop crews are the folks that rebuilt her. She is literally two times larger. These two engines in one. And basically, if you look at the wheel arrangement, and I give you a picture of thirteen oh nine, it looks like two Two-O-Two's connected in one body. So she's huge. She weighs a lot. Two-O-Two is a small girl in all reality. But they're all Baldwin-made, which meant they were made in Yellowstone, Pennsylvania. And so they're very similar, because most builders didn't change certain designs. If you have a ninety-one Ford, you drive, you know, you get a two thousand and one Ford, you'll find a lot of similarities. And Baldwins were kind of like the four of the GM product of steam manufacturing. So do we know what to do with her? Yeah, we got a track record on this. And the other sister that we still have, seven thirty-four, the original plan was to go after her and get her back up and running. Our plan now, I do believe, would be to table that idea, because we'd like, we like the honeymoon that this will bring. And we'll get this back running sooner, and simply because she's actually gonna be a little easier to redo than our seven thirty-four is. And actually, seven thirty-four, again, did not belong to the Western Railroad. She's painted Western Railroad, but she didn't belong to the Western Railroad. She worked for Lake Superior and Eschpimming, and she used to push Or Jenny's up onto the barges for the barges. So that's why we want the real, we want the real thing as soon as we can get her back up and running. And so again, I give you my full faith and confidence in this. I know our folks, and they know what they're doing. Keeping in mind, this is a nineteen twelve product, and we went through this with our nineteen forty-eight product. Not gonna try to snow job anybody. You don't go to Lowe's and buy parts for these things. And thirteen oh nine took us a couple of years to rebuild, because you have to fabricate the parts. If the parts are bad, you just don't call it Baldwin, they don't exist anymore. They closed in the early sixties, they don't, there's no catalog of parts, okay? So if it's something that's bad on a locomotive, fifty percent of the time, you're gonna have to fabricate it. We can fabricate a lot in our shop, some stuff we'll have to farm out. And again, we're going on the premise here that we know the engine was fired in the late eighties and ran back and forth. Since then, it has not moved. We really don't know what we're getting into, and we're not asking for any blessing from you all to say, hey, we'll throw some money your way to help with the project, because it's buyer beware, as is, is the way we know you're gonna want to hand it over to us. So it's all on us, there's not much on you.
And that answered my other question.
And I, I want to add too, so um, I met Bob when the 1309 had been on property for about three and a half years. So my lineage is with, uh, originally was with the Norfolk Southern Steam Program, which came to an end about the year he was born. So yeah, I'm, I'm holding up okay. At least I like to think so. Right? So I was uh, impacted by the Southern Steam Program. I was three, uh, there's photos of uh, the gentleman that ran those railroad programs, and then there's a photo of Little Wes. And I still remember looking back in the steam engines behind me and I said, mommy, I'm going to run that. And then I did. Uh, it took me about 20 years more, but I did run it. And, and what I'm rambling on is to say the people in our shop, uh, there, there are three of us that specifically worked with the Norfolk Southern Steam Program. Which if you know anything about trains, they ran the steam engines around the, the property that they own until 20, or excuse me, till 1995. And then they did it again from 2010 to 2015. And their, their entire use of these locomotives, whether they were in a museum or static or whatever, was to promote history and things for children's hospitals, things for any number of nonprofits. So the three of us that have been around it have been in and out of it for about 30 years. Recently, we brought on a, a young man from Portland, Maine, outside of Portland, Maine, who worked for me at Main Narrow Gauge. I was the executive director there and oversaw three steam engine restorations there. Um, all much smaller, uh, because they ran on the two foot common carrier, believe it or not, the railroad tracks were only about yay wide for a hundred years. Um, but I've moved him down to take over our steam program. So when you look across the board of all these young men and women we've hired, we have amassed about 60 years of steam locomotive, diesel locomotive, and passenger car work of some kind. With all the railroads operating different things. So just, so you know, the human piece of it coupled with the mechanical piece of it.
Thank you.
I mean, I think that the difference between two and a half years ago and now is the recognition that we're not the best place to be the best long-term stewards of this uh, item. Um, and I think, as I said at a prior meeting, I think that governments and historical bodies and, and the like sort of get caught up at times in that degree of protectionism.
Sure.
To the degree of the decline, simply out of just the absolute desire to protect the item. Um, and I don't think that that's the best course for it. And I think that in the two years, we sort of tried to give it that um, effort, you know? And the effort is just plainly more than we're willing to commit. I think in time and energy and finances. And we'll be looking at it in another 10 years and going, you know, okay. And now we've got to come back and sort of, sort of, you know, dress it up again. And, and so, so to me, that's just not, not what we should be doing. I think when I went through the restoration of, and I said this, to, uh, when, when I went through the process of the restoration of the Myersville Trolley, it was very similar, you know what I mean? It just, uh, it is a time-consuming costly process whereby a lot of folks have parts and pieces that want to hold on to those parts and pieces. To the detriment of actually seeing the thing live and in action and full and whole again. And so you guys seem to be the best, you know, avenue to make that happen, uh, and I think it's the best.
Thanks for visiting us again, um, and I am totally for this proposal to have 202 back and running. With your guys' expertise, I know she'll do well, she will do well.
Very good, thank you ma'am.
But I, um, if, if the rest of the body agrees at one point, um, would you keep the city updated on the status?
Absolutely.
Okay, because that's my only thing is I want to hear about. What's happening.
So the, the three of us, we spent an inordinate amount of time with each other. We're like brothers that we never knew each other until a year ago. Same thing here. Not only will we keep you updated, we have, we have several young men and women that work with marketing. There are ways that we've discovered that you can take something that, you know, so Western Maryland's way over here. But you can market and have an impact on making somebody else's situation uh, more impactful and more exciting and drawing somebody's eye to where maybe their eye didn't.
Wouldn't go.
Go before. So we would love to do that. That's kind of why we want to do something that at least a couple of times a year, we've got to do something where money goes back into the community. So the train makes for a really cool thing to use, right? Right now, we do a program with UPMC, uh, University of Pittsburgh Medical. We are their number one donor for their foundation for hospice care. A lot of people don't even know they exist unless they get sick out in Western Maryland or Pittsburgh. So we do about a $50,000 donation. Now, obviously, we're not cash donors because we're a nonprofit and we're poor. And at, at least in theory, right? So what we do is what, what are we rich in? We're rich in talent and we're rich in the ability to be creative. So we have taken the train and turned it into a donor opportunity. So um, I know we're doing a couple of things where a bank bought one, another medical, a, a doctor bought a train. And what they do is very interesting. I almost had a tear when they were in here because some of our best trains are for people uh, with different skills and hours and special needs. And we do that at different times of the year, whether it's a Christmas, we're doing, I know we're doing a pumpkin train. They'll have an entire section of the train that's just for them, designed for them. So it'd be great to be able to tether that. And uh, somewhere in here, I know we put the pride of Hagerstown on the cab, and that would stay on the locomotive.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Couple of quick questions, and I wasn't here before, you know, two and a half years ago. So I'm sorry, this is a little redundant, but um, real quick first, um, tell me about the, any rail line connection between Cumberland and Hagerstown? That's accessible?
So there is, uh, CSX operates from the, what was, we were talking about this on the way down, the Hagerstown Roundhouse, of course, used to be. Um, over there, and I don't know the name of the street, so please forgive me, but I know that there's a little bitty chunk of it left, which is the Hagerstown Railroad Museum. I'm in contact with them all the time because they're, they're shrinking. Because the individuals that started it are no longer with us, and it's down to a couple of the sons of the fathers. And they're trying to figure out how are we going to divest this equipment before it becomes too late? And just three weeks ago, Norfolk Southern, uh, they, they tend to roll a train over about once a year over there, maybe twice a year. And they rolled one over right into part of the collection.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, so, and of course, they picked it up, but not without the battle damage being there, so.
So um, just out of curiosity, do you all get into any modeling of the trains that you, are you guys into any of that?
Everyone on staff, except for the three of us, uh, I don't know if Bob has too many at home.
I have them, I just don't have the place to have them all out. I've got a hell of a collection of HO stuff with lots of Western Maryland and BNO and all that stuff.
But are you thinking about the, the railroad, do we offer models?
No, I'm just curious if you're into modeling, we can figure out the rest of the conversation. Okay, good, just we'll, we'll talk about that. So let me just say as a, as a, as a fellow rail, rail fan. And, and understanding the history of Hagerstown and why it's called the hub city, it's not because of two interstates. It's because of the trains, the train lines that came through the hub of Hagerstown and went back out. You know, a hundred years ago, two hundred, whatever years ago. You know, I get the same emails that Councilman Schindler was mentioned, uh, and, and that definitely tugs at my heartstrings as well. Because it is a significant piece of Hagerstown's history. Not just the area's history, but literally Hagerstown's history. I went to the unveiling with the mayor of the plaque that's over at the, at the city park in front of the engine. And I remember some of the comments that were made during that unveiling was uh, the pride that the workers in Hagerstown took. You know, in, in the equipment that they were running. And I remember one of, I don't remember which speaker, but one of them said, everybody knew the engines that were coming out of Hagerstown because they were the clean ones. So I understand the, the, the encouragement to kind of keep Engine 202 in Hagerstown. But it's also my understanding, and we have, you didn't mention this, but I hope I'm not, you know, going too far, but that the restoration that you were referring to of all-in labor, materials, and so forth. It could be well into seven figures, in other words, millions of dollars. With an S, not one, but more than one. Which, as Councilman Asher said, uh, and I agree, i- is not a commitment that the city is capable of making. So as you're working with this, working through this, um, and I'll kind of echo some of the comments, which is maintaining that connection with Hagerstown. And yeah, you talked about the name on the, on the engine, you talked about, you know, bringing people up to, to to, you know, the scenic railway in, in, that goes from Cumberland to the turntable in Frostburg and then back again. But maintaining that connection, I think, will go a long way uh, with the people who, and, and apparently there, there are many, because we're getting the emails and the, and the letters, um, the people that still feel that, you know, even though this, this engine's been out of service since 1952, so 70 years plus. Out of service, uh, there's still that, that close tie to the, a lot of people in our community. So I think that that's something that, that I'd like to see, you know, all of, you know, us explore as, as, you know, as apparently we're going to be talking about figuring out how to do some kind of transition. Because unless a benefactor out there is willing to write a check to the city of Hagerstown for $2.2 million. You know, I just don't think that, uh, I don't, I, I, as a rail fan, as I said, I don't want to see it rusting away. You know, even under the pavilion in, in the city park. So uh, thank you for your interest and, and your expertise. And hopefully there's, there's something that we can figure out here and, and put that beauty back into service.
Well, if I could just wrap up real quick, as, as a politician myself of many years. You've got to save face, I understand that. I very much understand that. We've done a lot of projects in Frostburg, and is that the best thing? Maybe, again, you can't make everybody happy, but politicians, right? We know that. But sometimes you got to say, what's the best thing for everybody for the long haul? And again, when we stopped here this, this afternoon, it breaks my heart because I'm 60 years old and I can almost remember steam on the Western Maryland. I certainly remember the early diesels and coming through Frostburg and all that other stuff. And um, to say you guys are proud of it because it was donated in 52 and probably had one paint job since it's been over there, maybe two. And what it cost today, yeah, we know what it cost today. We spent $4.4 million on 1309. And against, and we, we have a lobbyist to help get a state grant, we have the wherewithal to, to get, to get cash back in. And I really feel, so it's not to, you know, again, give this even more color and pizzazz. We've got a great, I'm great, um, communication with Wes Moore. We've all been in his office, we have pictures taken with him, um, he loves the river, he's been on Rover Express with his family. And Wes said, we'll help you. Wes got us $1.5 million to repair a bridge. I'm, I have no, there's no doubt that we say this, this was a Maryland locomotive, and where it slipped and so on and so forth. I'm here to tell you, I feel pretty strong about that.
And we had the opportunity to speak with uh, Councilman Peter when we were at Mako. And I know he's a rail fan, so the truth, I had to share how we, we fundraised it. 1309 was a labor of love. I was on the contractor's side, I was managing the main narrow gauge. And Jim Ren called, uh, late Jim Ren from Trains Magazine, said, how do we finish this? And there was a phone call between Jim Ren and, and two colleagues of mine. And we figured out how to fundraise what the engine needed and push it over the edge. So I think the engine would have a, a lot of recognition that would help fuel the restoration and fuel uh, us and our abilities to be a good custodian. So anyway, thank you guys all for having us. And um, if you have any questions, uh, obviously you can reach out to Bob, myself, TJ, and we'll try to get you uh, answers and, and when the time is appropriate, if we need to do solutions for how we work with Hagerstown to, to better the community. If, if you all would like us to make uh, some sort of contact with uh, with this group, I can have Dikey reach out to him and we start conversations. It's uh, kind of codify some sort of an agreement. And then I'll bring it back to you all for, for discussion and approval. That's all we do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for letting us. Appreciate it.
Second time's the charm, right?
That's right. I'm sitting over there.
Thank you all.
I'm always interested in that.
Good to see Wes.
Twice in the last month.
Oh, we still have more, sorry. Next up, we have a discussion, oh no, proposed updates guidelines for CDBG Micro Enterprise, Enterprise Grant Program. We have Margie Joe, our Community Development Manager, and Rachel Paul, Planning and Outreach Coordinator.
Hi, everybody. So during the July 27th, 2021 work session, um, with the ma, the mayor and city council approved the guidelines and application for a CDBG funded micro enterprise grant program. The program's goal is to support and cultivate small business growth and stabilization for low to moderate income residents. The minimum grant amount is $2,500 with a maximum of $5,000. Eligible costs include salaries, rent for commercial properties, professional services, technological infrastructure and upgrades, inventory and training. FY 2022 was the first year for micro enterprise grant, and in the past few years, we've found some areas where we feel like we can improve the administration of the program. So um, there were just a few, what we think are kind of minor changes to the guidelines. Our goals with making these changes, uh, we want to tighten the process, to streamline review of applications, reduce time spent chasing down documentation, making eligibility criteria clearer to reduce ineligible applications. To make the micro enterprise process itself clearer to both applicants and uh, SBDC staff who work with small businesses and often recommend our program. And ultimately, we just want to more strongly uphold uh, the spirit and the intent of the program by supporting those businesses that will have a positive impact in their neighborhoods. Hope you entertain any questions?
Can you, can you just say um, out loud what the changes?
Yeah. So the first one is for roving businesses, um, to have been in operation for at least six months in order to provide a documentation that they service the city itself. Currently, the, the qualifications for roving business is to prove that at least two thirds of the business is being done within city uh, locations to benefit city residents. And um, this would just establish that somebody would, because technically at this point, you could just walk in and say, I'm starting a business. Go through the grant, receive the money, and then operate the business outside of the city without any proof that that is what your intentions are. So it's pretty much just to make sure that roving businesses are serving the city.
Just looking to get sufficient history of documentation that thinks, okay, I've done, um, I've been to 20 locations and, and 18 have been within city limits. One of the other additions, uh, independent contractors who perform routine services expected of the business would be considered. business and with table service. So you would expect to have servers coming to your table, but in there, in that case, they were, they had the servers as independent contractors. So to avoid, I guess, to, to get by the employment, or the employee headcount of five or less, including the owner. So, you know, one would expect if you're going to a restaurant and having table servers that you would have, you know, a hostess server. So that was one of the other changes. A couple of the others, business and owners must be in good standing with the city and state of Maryland. Business and owners must be in compliance with all applicable City of Hagerstown regulations, including land management code.
And, yeah, the last one is just age-restricted businesses or like rental property investment businesses, and then also cannabis-based businesses would be ineligible for the program. That's just to uphold the spirit of it's, if it's, we, like, we want the business to be at the benefit of all people. So it would be like, like a vape store, we wouldn't qualify, or a...
Well, pawn shops, tanning salons, any kind of gambling establishment. Yeah. So a lot of what we formulated with these changes, we looked at the CDBG programs, and that was sort of what we took some of their best practices and tried to incorporate those into what we have. Thank you.
Just a, kind of an odd question. I, I understand the intent of this last revision, the, the age-restricted 18-plus things that, of that nature. But when you talk about that and you talk about like senior-based businesses, in a weird tech, with, is the wording going to catch us up on that? Because technically they are, there's net serving children.
Oh, right. And I guess in that kind of specific case, we're, we're just looking more...
I understand the intent, but I just didn't know if that, if that verbiage was going to catch you up when you try to do, if you have a senior living type of place.
That actually is a good point. And we can look at tweaking that, because like, certainly we don't, we don't want to disqualify anybody who would, who would be in business to assist.
That was my hope. I know there, I know there are some senior-based places that apply for CDBG, and I'd hate for them to get caught up in like a technicality, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Those updates guidelines for CDBG, Single Family Repair and Rehabilitation Grant and Loan Programs, Margie Joe, Community Development Manager, Sue Kyler, Project and Program Coordinator, and Amanda Gray. I was going to say, Amanda Gray, Amanda Gray, Business and Development, Business and Community Development Finance Specialist.
That's shrinking now.
Must help you a ballgame.
So, CDBG, Single Family Rehab Grant Loan Program looks to offer income-qualified homeowners resources to address significant home repairs that may affect health, safety, or sanitary living conditions, or, excuse me, as well as offering low-interest loans to maintain and improve their homes. This program has received funding in each fiscal year since its inception and has proven to be extremely popular and very successful. So in the past year, our team has reviewed our Single Family Rehab Grant Loan Application files from the last several years, and we've identified a number of areas where we think these programs could be more effectively administered. We researched similar programs from other municipalities. We compared them against our program and noted some of their best practices and procedures that would help us to have the greatest impact while also maintaining our compliance with HUD and CDBG guidelines. Overall, we found that our program is very sound, but we thought there were a few changes that we can implement that will strengthen and help us maintain the spirit and intent of this program. Happy to entertain any questions on those.
I, I assume that like in the last packet, the, the changes are the ones that are highlighted in yellow? Okay. So a couple, a couple of quick questions. So the applicant must have owned the property to be rehabilitated for a minimum of two years, applicable only to grant program. To me, that seems counterintuitive, because I would hope that a program like this would encourage not only homeownership, but give the opportunity to take a less-than-perfect property and upgrade it. And I don't know anybody that would want to live in the property purposefully for two years at some standard, waiting for the program to kick in to provide grants. You want me to ask all my questions, or you want to take them one at a time?
Do one at a time. Remember. So my, our feeling on this, this part is, an emergency is an emergency. If we want to take a rehab home, we could do another program that would subsidize that. This program is strictly based on HUD's emergency guidelines. That doesn't mean if you have a home inspection and you know that your roof's leaking, you're going to buy it and just come back to the city and say, hey, can you fix it? This guy, this program was specifically designed for emergencies that you did not know prior to, and then the city comes back and fixes it.
Okay, but still, and I, that's fine. What's the magic of two years? 24 months? I mean, you buy a house and six months later, you find out that blank is wrong, roof leaks, hot water heater blows up, whatever.
And I, I guess I agree with that in this, I guess we've had several applicants that have had the perception that then they buy, they can come right back to the city and we're going to fix it.
And you're trying to avoid...
And I, I'm not saying we have to keep the, the full two years in there, but if you say this, and then they're like, oh, you open doors if you don't have a specific timeline and not...
We, we do, with other language within the guidelines, we do allow ourselves some flexibility, flexibility to address a situation like that. But we are just, we're just trying to keep the, the spirit and the intent of the program sound and to strengthen our process.
And this is more on the emergency grant side, not the rehabilitation program. So there's two different, well, there's a loan, and then there's a forgivable grant. So the forgivable grant is an absolute emergency.
And maybe, maybe there could be a little bit additional language to give yourselves a little bit of leeway, maybe. The second of three is the $10,000 lien, effectively, for grants over, or for grants in excess of $10,000, there will be a lien that's then prorated if the property transfers, the lien will have to be satisfied, right? So is that, when it says prorated, is it just you take, you take that, whatever the loan amount is, and divide it by five, and it's that much every, every year?
20% per year.
20% per year.
And actually, that particular guideline is something that we found a lot of other municipalities have put in place, I think, just to, I guess, to avoid the situation where somebody will use city money to fix up the home and then turn around and flip it.
So again, maybe a little bit extra language to clarify that it's 20% per year. And finally, I mean, I know it's not a big deal to register with SAM.gov, but I also know that most, you know, home improvement contractors don't even know it exists. What's the reason for requiring that registration?
It's a HUD requirement.
It is a HUD requirement, even though the city is dispersing the money?
Well, it's, yes, that he disperses...
Well, it's federal funds, but it's flowing through the city.
Yes, but we still have to abide by HUD guidelines.
Okay. All right. Everybody's got a line with them.
We're good.
That is.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, no, we're not, we're not, sorry. Councilman.
Under the program, resources for the existing language where it states, city uses HUD, Community Development Block Grant Program funds to provide this assistance. Income eligibility determinations are based on the requirements of the CDBG program utilizing the Section 8 annual income definition at 24 CFR 5.609 of the HUD regulations. So I'm assuming a lot of people don't know what that is, probably don't know what the numbers are, number one. Is that a HUD requirement, that line? So my curiosity, when I read that language as a homeowner, is one, how do I know I qualify?
It's in our application, actually.
These are just the guidelines that are like the basis of behind the program, and then your application is the one that lists all of your income qualifications for how many people in a household.
So as the elected representative, looking to approve this, then my curiosity is, are they keeping up? Meaning, I don't know what the change is from last year to this year as it applies to the annual income definitions, but I imagine those are ceilings, meaning, meaning I can't be above this. The problem is, when I go to Lowe's and buy something now, the, the, the materials that I'm buying at Lowe's are 30 and 40% higher than they were three years ago. I'm just curious if HUD has adjusted those numbers up comparable to the cost of materials and contractor services that have went up?
They, well, they do. They adjust every year, and we also post those on that, that page in our, on our website.
Adjusted by?
By HUD.
But I got that as my question.
Specific to, specific to the, the Hagerstown metro area.
I, I guess maybe that's still my concern, is I don't know what those numbers are. So let's say that the income guidelines, you know, three years ago were $54,000 for a household of four, just using a number. Now they're $63,000 for a household of four. I'm, I would want to know if the, if, you know, replacing a roof or a hot water heater, a hot water heater three years ago was like $300, and now it's like $700, you know what I mean? It's went up 110%. And I'm just, you know, when somebody goes to do that, and they look at these guidelines, you know, that, that amount has changed significantly, which then decreases, one, the eligibility pool of, of individuals that live within the city to be able to afford to, to, you know, meet those requirements. Number two, decreases the amount of opportunities that you can provide to the number of interested parties that want to participate in the program.
Well, we had actually, in, in response to exactly what you're, you're mentioning, we had raised the cap on each individual grant project, or it might be, it might be a number of repairs, but we had raised the ceiling to, from $10,000, $15,000...
Which I think is great.
To account for.
I just want to make sure HUD has increased, so, because the person that could afford it at $60,000, you know, now you should be including people that are making $80,000, you know what I mean? Because their cost of, of income to affordability of project repairs has drastically changed, and more people should be eligible under this program than less as that change occurs.
I think HUD defines the income guidelines based on, like, all of their, all of the possible programs that could benefit citizens. I think it's, I think they put it more on our shoulders to, like, like we did, like to raise the cap. So we're going to, you know, we realize that costs have gone up, contractor expenses have gone up. So then, you know, in turn, we realize that, we recognize that, and to make the process more eligible to, to have the biggest impact, then they kind of rely on us to come back and say, you know, but, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of a higher, higher cost.
I'd like to see a copy of what those numbers are, of this specific section.
Sure.
No, yeah? You good? No, it's good? Thank you. Good to hear.
Just one thing, Mayor, just want to thank all the staff that have worked over the last month to put on the Aaron Brooks Celebration on Saturday. This was a joint effort between the city, the county, Board of Education, Younger Toyota, Negley Water, and I'm going to miss somebody, but especially, oh, there you go, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to say anymore about it, except I really want to thank the Box Cars staff that were there. Those young folks have been drinking water through a fire hose since April, and I think Saturday showed how much maturity they have gained over the last several months in being able to manage and put on an event, and I, I can't thank them enough for working with us to get this done. So it was a great day, and I know that the Brooks family appreciated it, and just staff did a wonderful job, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember, Grady?
No comments.
I mean, look, McIntyre, not even here, and see, it took my time. Councilwoman Burnett.
Now I just want to echo our city administrator's comments about Aaron Brooks' celebration on Saturday. I know I mentioned this before during my comments, but just the collaboration that was done for him and his family and his achievements should be something that's mimicked for years to come, not just for one person, but for multiple entities to come together like they did on Saturday, was amazing to see. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Other than, I'm sorry.
I have nothing to say.
Yeah, shouldn't we?
I'll just tack on something, a little in the same vein with the celebration of Aaron Brooks on Saturday. I'm really glad to see, it seems like not just Mr. Brooks who deserved that honor, but the ability to find individuals in our community, for our city to rally behind and to unify and to be proud of, is important, and I'm glad to see that we've brought that back, and I'd like to see that continue. I, I think that's been fantastic to see with the key, the key to the city program. I, I think that's fantastic, so thank you to everybody involved.
Yeah, I want to just add on to that. I think that it's amazing, one of the things that I'm most happy about is that Aaron Brooks' Day, first September 7th, has been declared for the city, the county, and the school system. And I think that that really speaks of the collaboration that happened in those planning meetings, and I want to personally thank Brittany and Leah for taking that heavy haul and having to work multiple different sides of things, and also work with the family and work with, you know, all of the collaborators. They did an amazing job, and I thank Hagerstown Police Department and Hagerstown Fire Department, both of our chiefs, just amazing, the, the, the way that we showed up and made sure that Aaron and his family were able to get from Younger Toyota to Meredith Park was just awesome. City staff, Parks at Rec, just amazing. I mean, I just felt like it was, it was the opportunity that we all came together and showed each other, like, what happens when we do come together. I, I want to thank the county staff as well, they were in the meetings and engaged, as well as the Washington County School System staff. I mean, they put things out, the Facebook pages all matched, and I thought that that was really cool, too, to see each Facebook page, you know, have the same verbiage, saying the same things. I want to thank DJ Morales and Spencer. I heard they had Meredith Park rocking and the excitement up before Aaron arrived. Green Line Security, thank you, and then Meredith Park staff, and especially David, he's the, is the executive director?
Blackstone.
Blackstone, general manager. David Blackstone, the general manager, just thank you. Thank you for the extra care and, and just the staff being there. And I heard that a lot of their, there was not a game day, so a lot of people were away. A lot of staff was on vacation, and they still, they still showed up. Thank you, Negley's Water and Younger Toyota, that, that kickoff was amazing, simply amazing. Also, 103.7, 103.7 showed up with a truck, and it actually played interviews the entire time during the book signing, I mean, the autograph and pictures. Thank you to everyone that showed up that day. Aaron, when I met Aaron back in the conference room, just to kind of ask him, was he ready to go? He thought that no one was out there. He also thought that he was going to get a break. And when he walked out and he's seeing the junior hubs and, and seeing everyone out there, he just was in disbelief. So thank you to all the parents and, and all the folks that traveled and stood in the pouring rain just to tell stories and take pictures with them. Thank you to the Hagerstown Wordhogs. Hagerstown Wordhogs decided, you know, they were going to show up and be on one accord in our uniforms, and the kids got to see that. They got to see our own, you know, basketball team as well as our Box Cars together. Thank you to parent teachers and coaches. What an amazing job you do. It was amazing to see that, I know three of us sitting at the table have been taught and coached by the, the, the two that were speakers. And so to see you still actively involved and engaged in our youth and, and just doing what you do is just amazing. And so to see you still actively involved and engaged in our youth and just doing what you do is just amazing. Homecoming of Hope was amazing. It was awesome. And just for the last couple of days, watching Aaron go and visit small businesses and uplift them and take pictures of them and the excitement to know that we have an Olympian here. So congratulations, everyone. Thank you to Ms. Marilyn for singing. And North High Hagerstown Band and Chorus, the Junior Hubs as well. They were out there 7:30 in the morning. Their parents was out there with them. They were suited and booted in their uniforms. And they cheered the entire time.
From 9:30 until, yeah.
Yeah, well, they cheered from 8:00 AM when they arrived.
Yeah.
They started. Oh, they, they cheered and they cheered so much that the, the lines started cheering with them. And they just made that whole time out there just that, in the rain. And it just, no one cared. We were like, well, you guys are standing in the rain. They're like, this only happens once in a lifetime. We are here for this. So good job and Homecoming of Hope. Congratulations, Hagerstown. And thank you, Aaron Brooks, for just all, just who you are. And with that, we're journey.